Ms. S. Jones. Mr. Lang.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Dr. Roberts.
Yeah, present.
Mrs. Vow. Mrs. Vow.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can now.
Okay.
Ms. Vow. Present.
Present.
Mrs. Rhodey Collins.
Here.
We have a call room.
And so, Dr. Adams, I'll turn it over to you.
Dr. Adams, you need to unmute your microphone.
Sorry. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to share with you what has occurred over the last two weeks as we prepare for the COV-19 virus. I need to make you aware that on a daily basis, there is a meeting that will take place with the deputy superintendents and myself, a second meeting that takes place daily with the deputy the network superintendents as well, 10 o'clock and 12 o'clock. All departments are meeting also as we are meeting now. In addition to that, principals have a meeting scheduled daily as well with their network superintendents, and they are providing with an update of where we are in the district and also providing feedback to the network superintendents who therefore provide feedback to me. Again, you receive a 29, 30-page packet with a lot of information in it. And what I would like to do this afternoon is to walk through some of the key pieces in this document and obviously President and Board take questions or concerns that you might have relative to the information that you were providing. First and foremost, the academic update from Dr. Knight on page one lays out the fact that for the first seven, first two weeks, we were providing packets to students called continuous learning package. Those were considered enrichment packets, not actually a work that would be graded, but enrichment packets. Again, realizing that this decision was made after we were already into the spring break, it was necessary to provide the packets as we did. There were some 7,000 packets provided, approximately 3,451 as of yesterday have been picked up and will be same information was being provided on the website as well. At this point in time, the curriculum and instruction department, pages 18 to 21, it kind of lays out the class assignments that we're looking to put in place, starting on the 6th, going into the 22nd, which is the date that the mayor has indicated will be the extension of this this order. What we all over to you, but you can read to see that we are using three platforms, Zoom, someone that we're using right now, Microsoft Team, and Class Dojo, which is a platform that most people are using. Again, we will still have packets available for students beginning on Monday. That will be a new set of material that students will be receiving, and it's that intention is that that packet will carry students until the 22nd. I'll talk a little bit when we get to the technology piece, what we're envisioning around that. Our teacher support, there's professional development that is being planned for teachers so that they can go online and do professional development as well as take a test, if you will, that's being set up as we speak. There are three sessions that have been set up at this point in time. Our professional development day was scheduled for April the 10th. We hope to still do the professional development, but all teachers have a computer, and it's the intention that all teachers will go through the professional development as being provided. Academic instructional coaches will also be working with teachers in their buildings to provide support and feedback through the two and a half week period of time that we will look to do the virtual instruction. The gifted department, if you go to our website, it was just updated today, is broken down by gifted elementary, middle, high school, where students can click on and get information. But the gifted department is working, will be checking in with 80 to 100 families for ongoing activities that they will be doing. The second page, which is page two, basically just frames what ESOL department is doing. The ESOL department has been providing information, not providing from Operation Food Search, has provided them with 500 bags or boxes of food that they distribute to the ESOL community, and that is delivered and put on their porches. We're doing a similar piece in North St. Louis at Langston. Langston, our friendly temple is doing that as well in North St. Louis as well. The information for special education is really, really detailed because the federal government is still holding us accountable for how we educate special education students. And from pages 20, 22 to 29, it lays out in detail what we're required to do around special education. And they will be online beginning next Monday as well with the idea that they will be also providing support from their teachers. I'm not sure if the Board wants to pause at any point in time to have conversations about one particular portion, or they want me to go through the whole thing and then come back. President, I'll take direction from you.
So I think let's do it by department, so we can stop after each department and ask questions or dialogue here and then likely also at the end.
Sounds good. So are there any questions relative to anything in the academic space?
Dr. Adams, Dr. Roberts, I have a quick question. Relative to the academic portion.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you indicated that the, someone was going to the building for training, or did I hear that incorrectly?
Our training will be online similar to the setup that we have right now.
Okay. Okay, and is there a requirement for licenses to conduct this virtual online learning?
We already have the licenses already.
Okay, and and when you say we already have the licenses, what is that? Is that a requirement for students and staff or specifically for staff?
We purchase licenses for Zoom. We are already part of the Microsoft suite, but all of the things that we are presently using now, we already have.
Okay.
Okay, so to answer your question, for students and staff, they have the permissions to go on and do a similar to what we're doing now and also to put everything on the website such that teachers and students can participate.
Okay, and so I think I read somewhere where we, we have a total of 8,000 laptops or Chromebooks, 5,000 in root and 3,000 on hand?
Yes, ma'am. That is on the next page. I'll cover that when we talk about technology.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Adam, did you have a question?
Did. So as far as the the academics goes, so you had mentioned, Dr. Adams, that there is, you said that we're still being held to which standards again?
I'm sorry, I didn't follow you. Oh, I'm sorry. For special education students, we're still required to follow their IEPs.
Okay, so thinking about like the fact that even though those packets went out, that there is definitely some time lost until the end of the year. Even though there will be, to my understanding, no state testing, what are the academic priorities in terms of where students should be by the end of the year? So have those been adjusted, really, is my question?
Excellent question. If you're talking about special education students, their IEPs will determine what we are supposed to cover for them. So very, very specific as it relates to special education students. As it relates to regular education students or general act students, we are following what the scope and sequence would be if students would normally be in school. The adjustment we made, Mr. Lang, is that we are not focusing singularly on those standards that might be part of the state assessments, since the state assessments was deferred until next year. So to your point, we are following the scope and sequence, but we're not highlighting as we would if we were in school on a regular basis, those standards that were high-level standards for the MAP assessment.
Donna, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. And it's under academics, and I'd like to know, it talks about the ability to communicate and who determines if the student is accessing the teacher. So how, who, who's in charge of that team? And once this data is collected, who's in charge of making sure that the data is stored properly?
Are you talking about under academics?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and so basically, at this point in time, the intent is that the, if students are working on a particular assignment, that assignment, the teachers will be able to see what they're working on, or and they could take a picture of the assignment and give it back to the teacher by showing that they did the work. And that's not taking place right now because what we're doing right now is enrichment. It's not for a particular grade. Next week, when we start on the 6th, and we are having a phone conference or conference call with the state on tomorrow at 11 o'clock, all superintendents to determine what kind of flexibility we might have such that we are not necessarily grading students the way we would have graded them before. That's around graduation, around credits. So we'll get some more information from the state tomorrow and at 11 o'clock the uniform around all 555 districts. But right now, what we have said to our teachers is all of the work you're doing is simply a pass, fail grade. It's not going to be graded on A, B, C, D, and F. That may change on that call to the state tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Susan, did you have a question?
Not at this time.
I had a couple. I would be curious to hear about how principals and teachers were, are being used to inform the work of the academic office. So I'm seeing a lot of things coming out of the academic office and the curriculum instruction department. But if you could share about how we're incorporating feedback or work from teachers and principals, that would be great.
So again, we meet with the network superintendents at 12 o'clock every day, similar to what we're doing now. They talk to their principals through different calls. I think one is at 1:30, 2 o'clock, 2:30. They provide that feedback back to us so that we are making whatever kind of adjustments. In addition to that, we have identified sporadically throughout the district, a set of teachers to review the material before we send it out to get their feedback. So there's a subset of teachers, not in every single school, but a subset of teachers that provide feedback to the, to the curriculum department, so they make adjustments based upon what's going on. So principals give us feedback directly every single day, and teachers give feedback to their network superintendents, to their principals, as well as to the curriculum department through phone calls or similar kind of conferences that we're having with teachers.
Okay, so but teachers, we're not using them to work on development of the materials?
Not at this point in time, no. Again, teachers were all over the place, so no, not at this point in time. They are giving feedback about the work.
So as we go forward with things for the actual virtual learning, not the enrichment period, will we be using teachers kind of in a more, I guess, a more prioritized role to help develop those materials?
So for the, for the work that's taking place now till the 22nd, it is likely that the feedback we've gotten already is included in a small subset of teachers as I indicated. When we start doing the professional development with teachers, it is our intent at that point in time to get feedback from them about what we've already put out and what we can improve on as if this goes past the 22nd.
Okay. And so the professional development, is that going to be focused specifically on virtual learning and other things that are relevant to kind of teaching and learning in this pandemic period, or was it the professional development that was already planned?
It's really a combination of both. It will likely more lean toward what teachers need right now. Many of our teachers were not engaged in virtual learning at all. So this has been a really a big lift for them. Many, 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 many were not. We had to go back and have conversations with them about how to even set up their website on the class assignments and homework. I would say probably 10% of the population of teachers really were engaged in doing that kind of work. Many of them had not. So to your question, most of the work is going to be around addressing the issues that they are having as they try to turnkey this instruction for kids and what kind of feedback that they need to be better at doing what they're doing. I would suspect, President, that the most of it will be geared toward that, and a small percentage of it may be geared toward what we're looking to do next year with a small subset of teachers. Depending upon, again, how long this goes, it is likely that teachers will be working on things like preparing lesson plans for the future, preparing professional development for the future. But at this point in time, it is more likely to be focused around helping them get through this two and a half or three-week period of time.
Okay, great. I think that makes a lot of sense and sounds really helpful. And kind of along those lines, are we working with other districts who have been doing this virtual learning piece previously? Are we looking to incorporate just their, I guess, best practices, but also any content that they've developed? Is there any relationship there that where we can share some things so we're not reinventing the wheel and kind of taking that heavy lift away from our teachers and providing them with materials that have already been developed?
So to point one, there is a regular meeting that takes place with academic persons regionally, and so they're looking at best practices in terms of how to share. I'll give you an example. One of the things that came out of the meeting was that students really should not be in this virtual setting any more than about two hours a day with everything else that's going on. It's not the idea that we fill up six hours a day of instruction for students, but only about two hours. And so that's some of the feedback that we've gotten such that we've kind of trying to be as uniform as possible. I can't think of the acronym for the group. It's called SL something. I can't remember the rest of it. And I could provide that to you, but they meet on a regular basis to get feedback regarding that. The second question, if you don't mind, the second question, I'm sorry.
Oh, if there are other districts who have already developed resources, if there's an opportunity for us to kind of share from them, just so we're not just reinventing everything.
So yes, we have met with, a lot of districts are in the same place we are, quite frankly. Many have not done a deep dive, at least for a long period of time in this space. And so we are, I want to say, taking best practices, sharing best practices on a regular basis. We talked to University City Superintendent Veronica Hutton on Monday. We received some information from Chicago. So we're looking at what's happening across the country in this space because not only locally are we looking at it, President, we're looking at what's happening across the country because many persons have not been in a, in a place where they were trying to educate all students in this space. Most of them were educating a small percentage of students like we were. But so to answer your question, yes, we're looking regionally, but also nationally as well. Whenever anybody puts on their websites and then we reach out to them to find out how we could, I don't want to use the word, how we could leverage some of the resources that they're using.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I have a question about the virtual learning center that we currently have. How are we utilizing that? Because we have a very successful virtual learning program right now on a smaller scale.
Yeah, I'll get to that a little bit later when I talk about student support. We still are using it and we still are engaging those students. The, 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 the real question, Ms. Jones, is that we didn't have enough licenses to, to create for all 20,000 kids. And really, most of that work, while it is first time using the work, this was like the last semester of the, of the of the quarter, if you will, the last eight weeks. And so students normally get on and complete the entire work beginning in January through May. And so these students will be coming on for the very first time, getting on on the last month, and it will be, we saw it be much more problematic to try to shift students to that as opposed to students continuing with the work they were doing. In addition to that, we would just inform probably late last week that the state assessment wouldn't be provided. And so that was one of the reasons why we want to continue the work that was being done because we thought the state assessment was also be part of what students will be held accountable for.
Yes, sir.
And those students are on, or still already are. We check to see if we have enough licenses. We don't. We have RFP right now out, meaning that we will be evaluating a vendor for next school year, and it is our intent to probably increase the number of licenses that we will need next year in light of what we're seeing happening this year.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question, Dr. Adams.
Yes, ma'am.
What portion of our student population is participating in virtual learning? We're using the term. Is every student participating in that?
Again,
Do we have the capacity?
I'm sorry.
Do we have the capacity to provide every student with the, with the Chromebook in order to participate in virtual learning?
So I will cover that in the next section that's on technology. I'll, and I'll be right into answering that question in about 15 seconds. At this point in time, 3,451 students picked up packets and students were all online doing the work, but we were not tracking the work, if you will, for the enrichment piece because it was considered enrichment. When we move to the next phase, which is April 6th, we will have a better idea in terms of what the usage might be or who has the ability to do so. And I'll kind of walk through that in a few minutes.
Okay, going back to the special education piece, I understand that a number of superintendents are working together to come up with a cohesive plan across districts. Are you guys thinking about petitioning the federal government for some waivers around especially the special education piece? That's really a heavy lift with all the IEPs that are out there. So is there any conversation or, or any leverage to petition the federal level for relief?
So at this point in time, the council of great city schools, there are approximately 80 to 90 or 100 superintendents on the call on Thursday at 10 o'clock. And so we are talking kinds of things in cohesively, collaboratively talking about how we might ask for some kind of support or waiver. It is my understanding with the new stimulus bill that was passed three days ago, that the Betsy Devall has some flexibility or may have some flexibility to give waivers outside of what are normally required. So I would suspect that superintendents across the country, not only St. Louis, will be asking those kind of waivers from Desi with the hope that Desi will ask for the same kind of waiver. So there is an intent. Superintendents have voiced the concern because if we are not providing the kind of instruction that students who have IEPs have, we have to do compensatory time, which means we have to pay the students to get additional time on task with the, what the IEP says. So to answer your question is, yes, I would suspect there will be a request naturally for waivers, but most definitely locally. And at this time, the Betsy Devall will have the ability based on the law to grant waivers.
So I had a question about the two hours per day instruction. My sound dropped out for a minute. Is this tracked anyhow in any way and credited toward the student for graduation credits or how is that being tracked and how's it being communicated to parents and students?
So at this point in time, would our documents indicate anywhere from five or 10 hours a week is what we are recommending? Obviously, parents could have children on longer than that if they want to. Obviously, with this epidemic occurring, a pandemic occurring, there are a lot of things that are happening in households. So we didn't want to overwhelm students with too much stuff because people are working at home, they have other children, and so the dynamics of that just make it almost impossible for a student to be working in, at least in an educational space for six hours. And so we don't have guidelines yet on graduation. Again, we have an 11 o'clock call tomorrow, and right now it is enrichment. Starting Monday, it will be academic, and it is intent that we have some time that teachers will be dedicated to being online as well as students being dedicated to be online as well. So at this point in time, it's kind of premature to kind of tell you all of the details. I'll have more information after we have the phone webinar with the state tomorrow and after we get some guidance around what they might be recommending. So at this point in time, frankly, we are not grading anybody on anything. It's just strictly enrichment.
So at the time when we do shift to the more structured online education, will students be able to complete things kind of at their own pace or catch up on their own, or is it going to be basically as if they were in class on that same timeline for completion?
No. Preliminary, what we're, what we're looking to do right now, students have a window of time to complete assignments as they need. What we, what we are trying to make sure that we have available is a teacher to be available, let's say for a window of time, if a kid wanted to call, if a kid wanted to email, the teacher would be available from 8 to 10. And so that would be the time that a kid would email the teacher or go on Zoom like we're doing right now to be available to answer the kind of question that the kid might have. But the kid might work from 10 to 12 and might not have any questions or might wait until the second day to try to engage the teacher. So really, the times that we are trying to structure will be the teacher time being available and the students having flexibility to do it whenever that student wanted to do it.
So almost like keeping office hours at a university?
Yes, ma'am. Exactly. That's exactly what we are trying to make sure in place for every single student with the requirement that teachers will have office hours at that particular time. Again, this is brand new for teachers. Many of them frankly had no idea how to even do Zoom. And so we're working through that this week to try to get them up and running.
Thank you.
No question.
Yes, ma'am.
How are we working to consider, or how are we working to ensure the integrity of the conversations between teachers and students at this time, such as if, you know, they're given assignments and making sure that the conversations are where they need to be and along with like the times that people are contacting their teachers and students during this pandemic?
So the three platforms, Zoom, Microsoft Team, and Class Dojo, especially the format tool we have license for and we can record, and we are making it mandatory that there are other students on other dunks. I want to be really clear here. We have sent really strong language to all of our teachers that they should not be using their Gmail account. They have to use the SLPS account. Obviously, we have some history with this because of what happened early in the school year. And so we're, we're doubling down really, really hard to make sure that we have access to every communication that's taking place, and it can also be recorded. That's to protect the student, but as well as protecting the teacher as well. Mr. Sanom and I, right before this conference started, this meeting started, we had some conversations about making sure that that is really crystal clear to all of our teachers. So we've done everything in our power to communicate with teachers and with parents, although some parents are insistent about using some things that we don't support. We don't support, support Google and Gmail because those are not accounts that we can monitor. But it doesn't stop persons from making decisions to do it on their own. But we are making every attempt, Ms. Jones, to make sure that everybody understands what the rules of engagement are.
Dr. Adams?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Adams, you indicated that teachers would have the ability to communicate with students using those three platforms. And so students have knowledge of these platforms. They've been trained on them as well, or are we all doing this brand new?
I think it's a little bit of both, to be honest with you. We, we have a Zoom account and similar to what you did today, that would be given to a kid and the kid would click it on and automatically be uploaded to have a conversation like we're having right now. And the same thing occurs they can control what the conversation is. So we are training teachers. That's why, that's why I'm positive on April the 6th, everything I'm telling you is not going to be 100% in place. It will take, yeah, it will take place throughout the process. Some persons are really, really good at this, but some persons have not, frankly, have not even looked at their computer all year long because that's not the modality that they feel strongly use.
I have a question. For teachers who are struggling with the technology or who have students who are struggling with connecting to Zoom or connecting with the class, what sort of like immediate like responses do we have? Do we have some kind of survey that's being monitored, the teachers can, a form that teachers can easily fill out, that they're able to get support with setting their students up so that students don't miss extra days? Or is that a more complicated process that could take teachers' days to get set up with their students?
We have a a call center that's taking calls from teachers, similar to what we did during the school year. We have obviously expanded that. Persons, obviously, are not in the building, but we have a call center set up where teachers can call in and also email any kind of assistance they need. We were supposed to do a webinar today. That webinar was canceled. We found out that so many teachers had so many questions. We didn't cancel because of that. Microsoft had an issue in terms of setting it up, but we realized that this will be a slow process to get everybody up to speed and would take some handholding to do it. So we do have the ability for teachers to call in and email and try to get assistance, try to make everything work. In addition to that, every, every school had a, a tech person in that building. We're trying to leverage the tech person as well such that not only are teachers reaching out to us, they're reaching out to a colleague that was on staff that was responsible for supporting this effort as well. We're trying to leverage the tech person as well such that not only are teachers reaching out to us, they're reaching out to a colleague that was on staff that was responsible for supporting this effort as well.
Dr. Adams.
Sorry, go ahead, Adam.
Go ahead. All right. So as far as attendance, obviously, students aren't coming to us. But what is the importance that we're placing on measuring attendance? And if if we're doing that at all, just knowing that like, is it just what students turn in? Does that mean that they're present because they've turned in the work? Or that they've answered a call from a social worker or that they've connected with the teacher or they're, you know, they're marked, are they marked present in class Dojos? So how are we tracking attendance and is that something that we're still going to be responsible for reporting at the end of the year?
So at this point in time, the state has waived the attendance requirements. So we are not responsible for attendance at this point in time. We, the state is looking at the last year for attendance and so let's assume our attendance on today, which is the 31st of March was at eighty-five, nine percent. We'll get that attendance for this current year. So they have waived the whole attendance requirement in the makeup time as well. As far as we're concerned, until I have that phone conference tomorrow with the state and the webinar, I'll have a little bit better idea about the grading piece. Mr. Lane, right now, we we have not provided much or any instructions to teachers or parents around how grading will take place. We want to be uniform across the state. We don't want to be isolated. At St. Louis Public School is doing one thing. Rockwood is doing something else. Parkway is doing something else because as you might imagine, that communication will go out and we will be judged appropriately or inappropriately. So the bottom line is we're waiting to have the conference with the state tomorrow that hopefully will provide us some guidelines. It is my understanding that the governor may be extending from the April sixth deadline, which is a state deadline, to a later date, which means that the Department of Education will then have to provide some more guidelines for everybody around how grading is going to be done.
That was basically my exact question, Adam. And I just wanted to add how our budget would be impacted for next year. Do we know that yet or will that phone call tomorrow lend some insight?
So I'll cover that when we get to the finance piece because it's a lot of detailed questions around the finance piece. So if you don't mind waiting, Ms. Val, I'll run the way to that point in time because there'll be several questions, I'm sure, that everybody will hear relative to that.
Sure. I was just wondering how the weighted average daily attendance would come into that formula.
Yeah, they basically have waived it, so they're giving us a weighted daily average as if it occurred last year as opposed to this year.
Okay, so that will be the same state budget essentially as last year.
Yeah, yes, that is correct. Basically, I think that was projected will be the same. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions academics?
I have one, I think, final question. So with the, if it's my understanding, if my understanding is correct, we, there's not an attendance requirement. We aren't, we're doing pass fail grades. There's not sort of like common assessments at the end of the year. So I'm wondering what sort of the long term plan is for like either engaging students over the summer and reaching out to students who might not be in attendance regularly during this time? And then what the plan is actually for working with those students as they transition into the next school year?
So there is, we we're not sure if it's pass fail yet. That would be our recommendation when we have this call with the state tomorrow. We want to get some guidance around what they're thinking in this space. It is the intent that if students are not engaging, then there is some quote unquote requirement. That requirement may be to make up. That's what we're thinking right now without this state call tomorrow. The other one for summer school, there is some notion that there may not be enough funding for summer school at this point in time. And so summer school may not occur. In addition to that, there's some conversation also about the calendar. As you know, we made an appeal to Desi, the Board of Education, and they denied our appeal. There is some conversation about them being flexible about that. So part of what we'll be discussing at the 14th meeting is the possibilities of starting really, starting school much, 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 much earlier than we anticipated starting such that kids could get in back into the educational environment, especially if there's no summer school. So to be honest with you, there are so many things up in the air that it's kind of hard to answer every question specifically because we're waiting for some more guidance from the state around summer school, around calendar, around grading. Tomorrow's conversation should give us a lot better, give me a lot better information around what the state is thinking in that place.
One last question on the academics piece. We were talking about preparation for seniors earlier. How are we working with opportunities or support for the A C T, S A T, college prep sort of classes and opportunities for testing?
So all of the tests have been postponed. I want to say the A C T has been postponed to June, though quote unquote, I can see exact information. I don't have it in front of me. As a matter of fact, I think it's under assessment, under the assessment section, I want to say that that has been pushed back. I know it has been changed. I don't know exactly when the time is, but it has been canceled or changed. I don't have the exact date in front of me and all of the other assessments as well. The I B assessment has been changed, A C T, S A T, all of those have been pushed back. As we get more information, obviously, we will try to support students to get prepared for it. But at this point in time, very little to no work is taking place on our part, supports students in their place, only because everything has been canceled.
So I guess I I received some concerns from students who are worried about the admissions process for their college applications and being able to get those test scores in with those applications. Do we know about anything about any of the post-secondary, how they're handling things?
At this point in time, if a student already has an A C T score, that score could be used if the students had never taken an A C T or looking to get a higher score. I don't have any information from the universities in terms of them delaying anything at this point in time. I will make that as a question for us to get an answer for, but I don't at this point in time have any information on how colleges are going to be looking at the interest opportunity and deadlines. I can get an answer for you for that, but at this point in time, I do not.
And I did look, I did look into that, Natalie. Right now, most colleges don't know what they're doing, but some are considering waiving the testing requirement for students and just taking their grades and essay. But it varies by college.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Anything else on academics? Okay, let's move on to technology.
So technology, again, the bulk of what I will frame here is that, again, we work up everybody around teams as I indicated March 31st. We were supposed to have a live event and it was canceled for a number of different reasons. We're doing surveys of every single family. And I want to say at this time, at the time that this was done, and I think this was done yesterday, about twenty-six hundred families that we surveyed. I think the number is around thirty-five hundred right now. Basically, what we're trying to do is to follow them. We have enough iPads or technology hardware to give to every single kid. We ordered eight thousand before this happened, anticipating some things. We ordered eight thousand, possibly four thousand came in last week. We expected another four thousand. We are also purchasing hotspots, which means that the family would have the ability to go online and do their work. We purchased eighteen hundred from AT&amp;T. We received sixty-six of those eighteen hundred at this point in time. As you can imagine, across the country, everybody is trying to get these and they're at a premium. We were able today to purchase two thousand from Sprint with a commitment around another eight thousand. The cost for that for the next two months will cost somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars. Obviously, I will be asking the board to ratify something at the next board meeting and give you all of the background information. But we're still in negotiations regarding that. So to answer your question, Mrs. Dr. Roberts, we do have enough iPads for everybody. We don't right now have enough of the hotspots, if you will. The survey right now is indicating about seventeen to twenty percent of the persons who are asking for technology support say they need a hotspot. About forty percent are saying they need a piece of hardware. They have the internet capacity at home, but they don't have the, they don't have the tool. So starting Thursday of this week, we will start the the process of leveraging families and giving them hardware and likely hotspots. If the hotspots come in on Wednesday, like they are Thursday, like they're telling us they will. The challenge here, just to be totally transparent around it, is part of what this requires is this notion of being cognizant of this notion of social distancing. So we have to make sure that as persons are giving out technology, we're protecting employees and not putting parents in position where they may be compromised as well. We want to make sure that parents and students are healthy as well as our employees. So some of the nuances are still being worked out so we can protect employees with the appropriate P P Es. And that means you heard this on television, that's the guard that's needed, the mask, the gown, the screen and all of that kind of stuff. Because it has to be a little handoff to somebody. And that's why we're asking persons to do the survey because if they sign electronically, we could simply have them come similar to how we're doing with food and pick it up on the table and walk out. And so we're working on the details of how to make this happen. Do we have enough hardware? Yes. Right now, we will have approximately twenty thousand iPads. We have about eight thousand eight hundred and eighty right now that's in schools. We take those out of school. We've ordered another eight thousand, four thousand to come in. The challenge with the with the four thousand that come in is that we only had about a thousand covers. So we're waiting for another seven thousand covers. So we have the iPads, but the iPads have to be covered such that if they fall, they'll crack. So we have enough hardware. The challenge here is making sure that all of our families have the ability to have the internet capacity. Because if they have the hardware and don't have the ability to get online, it's a wasted tool. And so we've been diligent to try to get as many hotspots, if you will. We're also working with Charter, who is working to do so. But the challenge with Charter is if you have an outstanding bill or already part of Charter, you can't get the free cable or free internet that they're doing for sixty days. So I sent a letter to the president of Charter today asking for special dispensation for the St. Louis Public School District with the idea that they would likely create a hotline for our parents to have direct access to try to get this resolved. Because right now, my understanding is the wait is about two weeks before they can get anything set up with routers coming to their homes. So we've asked for special dispensation based, because it's based on the size of our population. I haven't got a feedback yet, but the email went to Mr., I want to say Phil Bar, B A R R A, and we're waiting for that to come back. So the bottom line is, from a technology perspective, we have the hardware, not enough of the hotspots to try to get to everybody. And so as they fill out the survey and the parents can't fill out the surveys, we have principals and teachers calling them and filling it out for them such that they can do it. The ESL population, the same thing. The homeless population, the same thing. So even if a parent can't fill out the survey, we have staff reaching out to them and transferring the information online such that they have the ability to be registered. Because the only way that we're going to be able to give out the technology is that we try to register every single kid. On April the sixth, when we start this process of going online for instruction, it is clear to me and to everybody on my team that we want to have everybody ready day one. And so it will be a process probably over the next eight to nine days of getting the technology out in people's hands and also the hotspots in people's hands and making sure that we are covering our staff such that no one is infected as a result of this. Because there are a lot of dynamics that we have to be concerned about. In addition to that, the city has asked us for a plan of distribution. They want to make sure that we don't have a hundred people come into a building to give software or hardware. And so we have to give them a plan tomorrow that lays out what we're going to do. We're thinking about Plexiglas in some places. We're thinking about a whole number of different things to try to make sure that we're protecting staff and not having persons come. We're looking at drive through people coming to eight oh one and drive through and hunking their heart. We walk out and bring it to them similar to what people are doing with food now. So I'm giving you everything with the idea that you need to understand. I'm asking you to understand that it's a process that's still evolving. We're looking at what other districts have done as well. Other districts have done it in their schools, but they have twenty schools. We have sixty-eight schools, so it makes it much more difficult. Plus seventy percent of our population is moving throughout the entire community, meaning that they are magnet schools. They may, they may not, they may not, they may live next to a school that's not their school. So they have to travel all across town to do so. So that's kind of where we are around the technology piece. We are also copying another set of documents for families who don't have technology. Some families are saying, I don't want the technology. I'd rather do the packet. And so we will have packets available similar to what we had this week for families as well. We probably won't run seven thousand like we did this time. We'll probably run about five thousand because at this point in time, about thirty-five hundred have been utilized. And if we need to run more, we can do so. So that's where we are on the technology piece. In terms of assessments, I'll quickly cover that, then obviously take any questions. All assessments, MAP assessments are over, are not taking place. A P's are not taking, A P, A P and I B assessments have also been canceled. We canceled the testing point and training and the end of course tracker for student identification for assessments as well has been canceled. Now, student records, students who still need records, the office is open two or three days a week. Mr. Kruger is going in and addressing any kind of student who might need a transcript from the previous years. We are still taking care of that and any kind of evaluation or research projects that we were engaged in. We are still looking and approving and denying those applications as well. I know there are a lot of questions around technology, so I'll stop, Madam President. At this point in time, if you have any questions with your permission.
Any questions for Dr. Adams?
I have a couple of questions. Was it mentioned before when I lost sound, the percentage of people, the families who have responded to the survey and the percentage that are outstanding? I apologize if I missed that before.
So at this point in time, about thirty-five hundred have responded to the survey. About seventeen percent have indicated they have a need for Wi-Fi. And about thirty to forty percent are indicating they need a, they have Wi-Fi, but they need a hardware. They need an iPad or they need a computer.
And is there any, I guess, procedure that we've ever developed for tracking these devices? Is there a planned attrition rate budget wise? Some of them are going to get lost or broken. Are we tracking them via serial numbers or MAC addresses and having each student or family check them out or?
We have, we have always had a tracking device on all of our hardware, computers or iPads. So we know where it is, where it goes. We have the ability, we could turn it off at any point in time. So we do have the ability to do that and we could also do that with the Wi-Fi when they come in as well. So we do have the ability to track the hardware.
And I guess we're kind of budgeting for some amount of loss of a few devices as kids drop them or?
Yes, ma'am. We have budgeted. We have run a scenario for all of those kinds of things. Yes, ma'am. I don't want to say it publicly, but yes, we have.
But we will be able to replace those for those kids who are, I don't know, have an unfortunate accident or crack a screen or something?
We do have some scenarios set up to try to address all of those factors and that's why we were waiting for the cases for the others. So yes, ma'am, we do. Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so as far as the survey is concerned, I'm not sure what format you're using to collect the data from the survey. But are we utilizing newspapers as well as TV or radio to communicate that there is a survey that parents can take or that these devices are available if they contact the school district?
We have not, to my knowledge, at this point in time, used television or radio. I do believe something is going to be in American this Thursday, but it is modest saying that we are basically sending it out on our website plus having principals call and get the information from the parent. We have about eighty-five percent penetration of good numbers. About fourteen percent of our numbers are not good numbers. So we want to use that modality first to try to contact parents because we thought it was the best way. Since teachers are at home, students are at home, principals are not in their buildings as well. So their task, we're connecting with their families and some schools have done a great job to the point of getting some eighty-five percent of their families to respond. So we're leaving it at this point in time, Ms. Jones, with the principal and the staff to try to get all of the information first before we look to go to those other measures that you talked about.
All right, thank you.
Could you talk a little about how the academic office and the technology department have worked together to choose apps and figure out like, how are these devices going to support what it is that the teachers in the academic office want them? how are these devices going to support what it is that the teachers in the academic office want them to?
So at this point in time, every single teacher has a website. And the teachers are looking to create the assignment that students, the assignments that students will do. The district, meaning the academic office and principals, have made recommendations, network sometimes as well, about what they should be working on. And so it's really left up to the teacher to look at all of the information that the academic office has given them. And they can select from the sheet you see pages 22 to whatever those pages were. Page 18 to 21. They can look at those pages and determine they want to use something from there. They want to come up with something on their own. But the teachers have the flexibility. We have a scope and sequence. And so what we're asking them to do, whatever was going to be taught the week of April 6 through the 10th, provide that same instruction to students based upon us providing you with the portfolio stuff that might be available to you. So that is what the intent is right now. In addition to that, the large number of items you see on page 18 to 21, they can pull any of those kinds of things for enrichment for kids. So in case you finish these assignments, you can look to pull these four or five things to work on as well. But really, it's really, we're trying to let it be directed by the teacher with some oversight items from the academic office or from the district and the principal. But we're trying to let the teacher be the driver in this case.
Great.
With the idea that they're not overwhelming here, that they're not giving them too much information. And we're all going to be monitoring that piece as well as complaints and concerns come forward because we've already gotten some.
That sounds great. I'm glad that teachers are ultimately making decisions to work with the unique needs of their students. But what I would be curious to hear more about is how are the, how is the academic office working with the technology office to make sure the devices we're giving to kids have the software or apps that the teachers and academic office want them to have?
I will ask that question. I think the apps are already pushed down, meaning that they are given to them when they pick up the machine. But I will double check that.
Right, but so loaded onto the devices. Are those the same, the same apps that the academic office has identified for teachers to use?
It's my understanding that since we've been doing this all year long, this is a process that they have worked out. In other words, academic office approves an app and then the technology department loads it on the machine. Because this is not our first time using it. We've just not had the ability to take them home in the past. We've been using them pre-K through grades four or five for the last three or four years. And so the apps were already uploaded from technology with the approval from the principals and teachers would make special requests. And we will put on after checking to make sure the app aligned with what we thought was appropriate. But I think that flexibility has always been there, but I can double check to make sure.
Dr. Adams?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to follow up. Is there a pacing guide that's really generated and shared throughout the district in terms of expectations by grade?
That's already, teachers already have that document. It's already out there. I think I provided some copies to, to one of the board members. I can't remember, but I think that's already out there, a website where teachers can pull and look at the pacing guide.
Well, it's a tool that can be used if they, if teachers and the academic office move forward and developing appropriate advice.
Yes, my understanding is the academic office, as a matter of fact, I know because I looked at it for ELA, there is a pacing guide that teachers have. They can go online and download it and look to see what they were supposed to do if it's not in their classroom. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Adams?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I know that in the schools, there are safeguards around different websites that you can visit, some that you can and cannot visit. So I want to know, outside of the apps that are approved by the academic office or the IT office, can people still download apps that were not approved on that list? And are there going to be any safeguards around what sites our students can visit while having these devices at home?
So the truth of the matter is, once a device leaves central office and leave the school site, the kid is no longer on our website. So we have the ability to determine what the kid might be on. That has to be monitored by the parent. Once we give a kid a hotspot, that's an individual hotspot that allows that kid to get on the website that we cannot control. That has been one of the greatest challenges for us in this space. E-Rate does not approve us doing this in any district. And that's why districts work so really hard. So this is going to have to be monitored by parents. And so we're in a very difficult situation for us. And I say that candidly. And so I want to be careful that they can't download apps on the iPad. Mrs. Van Omer just kind of sent me a text to make me aware that they can't download apps on the iPad. But what they can do is they go to sites that are not the sites that are controlled by us. So they can't download any bad apps, number one. Thank you, Mrs. Van Omer. But they can go to sites that are not approved by us.
And then any verbiage or forms that we give the parents, this language will be in there to fully inform them of that and let them know the responsibility of them as the parent while these devices are in their homes.
Mrs. Sanoma received a contract that he's looking at right now and approving. It is in the contract, out signed. Yes, it will. As a matter of fact, they don't receive an iPad or a Wi-Fi access unless they sign a contract acknowledging all of that. And Mrs. Sanoma could jump in the middle of this if he wants to because he's the one who's approving.
I'll just add that the revisions were made to the user agreement to, to Ms. Jones that both parents and students will sign acknowledging limitations on the use. One of them is that the iPads are for instructional, educational purposes and instructional purposes only. And so they will sign and acknowledge that they understand and agree to all the requirements of the use of the iPad.
Okay, my last question is, and thank you, Mr. Sanoma and Dr. Adams, is that when is time? And you know, hopefully this stuff ends, you know, soon and our kids are able to get back in school. Has there been a discussion around the process of collecting these hotspots and computers back from the students?
Yes, we have had a discussion around what that looks like. To your point, a lot depends on if, when kids come back to school. But we have conversations about how to get those items back. Yes, ma'am, we have. I can go through it right now if you want to, but we have.
Okay, I just wanted to know, I guess, like, whether there are going to be any liabilities on the family if they didn't return and should we get to that point? And what they should expect, you know? And if it's in the information that we're giving them initially, oh, we're passing out the iPads.
Yes, ma'am, that will be, all of that information is part of the contract.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Adams.
Dr. Adams, noting that last, at our last meeting, you did talk about like our homeless population and the overwhelming numbers that we have in the district. And knowing that we just have a highly transient district, and we're reaching those students that may not have a permanent residence in our district with either technology or the packets or whatever. So how can we make sure that they still are able to capitalize on?
So, Mr. Lang, what we've tried to do, and I talked to Ms. Deidre Thomas yesterday, I think it was, because those families are still reaching out to us for food and clothing and other kinds of things. And so we do have some connections with them. But as you might imagine, it's going to be very, very difficult for families as income dries up and them not being able to work to be in the same location that they were in before. So we're trying to be as sensitive as possible. At the same time, protect through PPEs, our staff who normally would do home visits to do this. So it is a real delicate situation. I don't know that we have an answer, Mr. Lang, to be honest with you. I just don't know that we have an answer right now. We are going to do our best to reach out to families that we can reach out to. But families are really moving already. We already know that their families have moved in the last eight days as a result of rent being due tomorrow. So there's some real challenges that we have, I'll be honest with you. So we're going to do our best to try to reach out to those families. But we don't have a real answer for the question that you just raised, really don't.
And I don't either. I know these are definitely uncharted waters and unique times. But one suggestion that I would make is I know that there are a lot of shelters, especially the ones that take in women and children. Maybe reaching out to them if that's where they are and not even accounting for the ones that may end up homeless as a result of the situation. But reaching out to those shelters, see what outreach we can do there and see if there are families there that are part of SLPS that we can get in contact with to make sure that they are being educated.
Yeah, one of the concerns that we have had, and Ms. Thomas has said, because those families are so transient, the iPads, the ability for them to hold on to the iPads through all of, becomes a problem. So it may be easier to provide with the packets as opposed to the iPads because as you're moving from place to place, that becomes a, can be viewed as a commodity. Now, we have the ability to trace it, to lock it down and turn it off. But it's just a piece of hardware that somebody can't use and they'll throw it away as opposed to give it back to somebody. So we are cognizant of that and just trying to make sure that we already, to deal with the issue that I think Mrs. Vowell talked about in terms of what the cost might be for replacement.
Thank you.
Any other last question?
Dr. Adams? I'm sorry, my computer went dead. Can you guys hear?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me? Hello?
Susan, I can hear you.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, I can.
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
I can't hear anything.
Susan, we can hear you. So we'll, we'll come back to Susan when she gets back on. Are there any other technology? Are we ready to move on to student support? Okay, let's go to student support. And like I said, we can always re-capture anything that we missed at the end of the meeting, work session.
Just a quick overview of student support. The big thing I want you to understand is that we have set up a phone line for families to call. Our help line so far, as of the 23rd, which was Monday, I'm sorry, last Monday, 35 calls had come through. And so our team is answering calls and trying to support families. We also work with a number of different entities, as you can see, to try to make sure that we are still available to provide support. Social workers are checking on families that they had cases active on by calling. The mental health board is working on telehealth that they think they'll be able to kick off on the 4/2. We are also working with the after-school program with 63 families. We're doing Zoom meetings with grantee directors. That took place on the 24th. 21st Century is still continuing to work 36 hours a day. Food service schools is looking to do a food, a bank, market, a dinner at Oak Hill on the 3rd and Wall Bridge on the 10th. And we're providing some food stamps and utility assistance. Families that have their medicine that they left at school. We've returned six parents their medicine. And we are responding to any other parent who left their medicine at school, not realizing that they were going to be out this long period of time. So we've been trying to be responsible for that. The nurse goes to the school, opens the door, gives them the medicine, have them sign off on it. The virtual school program, as I said before, is continuing. There's Garner and other persons be working to make sure that those the other piece around the student support area. This is the area that the health department, this Dr. Echoes, reaches out to us around employees or students who might be identified with the virus such that we could take the precautions that are necessary. So this has been the interface between the city of St. Louis around the notion of making us aware of what the city is doing around this, around this issue of the virus and the communication with us in terms of employees or students that might be impacted by this, at least they have been identified with actually having a virus. So we could take the precautions in buildings or in, with other employees that might be connected to them.
Have we done any kind of needs assessment survey for non-technology needs? So for students that need just traditional school supplies at home, paper, pencils, things like that?
We provided some paper and pencils when we let the packets go out, but we have not, to my knowledge, done that. Mrs. Willis is working with some of our partners to provide some of those things, a little bit of foundation, and others are providing hygiene stuff. But from my knowledge, we have not done a survey relative to those non-technology items. It's something I'll look to see what we can do through the school sites. But at this point in time, if I remember, from what I understand, this has not come up as one of the items that we are looking to get information on. But I'll put it down as something I'll look at.
Great, thank you. Susan, can you hear us now? Susan?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Great, so I just wanted to give you the opportunity to go back to the question that you had. We moved forward on to student services, but let's go back and catch your question on tech.
Yes, thank you very much for that. So my only question is, what is the amount that the families or parents would be, or guardians would be eligible for in that document that we're going to give them? What's the total for the iPad?
I don't know what the cost is, to be honest with you. I have not seen the document that Van Omar was looking at today. I think what the cost might be for replacing the item. I have not, I have not seen that.
Okay, thank you.
I can give you the cost, but I can't ask you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on student services? Are we ready to move on to operations?
All right, really quickly, custodians are still working. Obviously, custodians have any kind of concerns. We have not asked them for it. We are kind of, they are doing the cleaning, wipe down and wipe all of those kinds of renovations in buildings that, that takes place on people, you know, come in. So the custodians are going every day to make these people out there every day as well. Both cases, we are cognizant of the social distancing requirement. But you can see from the email, we have outstanding plumbing issues, outstanding work orders, boring, all those things that we are, that we are monitoring. They are working to do, to keep them in place throughout the time. The contractors are also working on. In terms of food service, there are 27 sites that are open. Five of the sites are going prep. One site offline with central BPA. We are providing 10 buses are bringing the food to the locations. They are preparing about 1,300 meals. And families can pick up to three meals a day, meaning they could get, start Monday and get three meals and come back on Thursday, get two more meals. Also, you can see all of the requirements on the second page. You can see the number of meals that we provided. We are not going to make any changes for the first two weeks. So I see that some of the numbers are low in places, but we will not make any changes or adjustments for the first two weeks because that's the communication we made. Likely on Friday, we will reassess and determine what kind of shifts that we need to make. We believe, however, that the deeper this goes, the more likely it is that families will need to have this resource available. So we are really monitoring to determine if we want to make any changes. But at this point in time, there's 27 sites that are up and running. And these sites also may be distribution places for the computers and the hotspots as well. You can see on page nine, it lays out citywide with the numbers of the last week and three days. And there are about 20,000 meals that were provided. The district provided about 11,000 altogether. Safety and security, I won't really talk about that other than to make you aware that we do have safety and security housed at these sites. They are considered critical needs. And they are working in those sites for four hours a day to make sure that there's some safety concerns. I mean, if there are any kind of safety concerns, they're addressing it. And they're also monitoring all of the district resources, the 68 buildings that we have out, that they are patrolling and doing all the kinds of things they would have done throughout their school year. So that's, at this point in time, the only thing that the transportation buses are doing, there are 10 buses that are going out, dropping off food. They'll pick up food from, let's say, Boltline and drop it off at eight or nine different sites. And the workers are there will get the food on the tables or, or in some cases, and I know Mr. Lang had an excellent question this weekend. In some cases, they'll drop it off and persons will give it to persons in cars as opposed to coming into building. But if they want to come into building, they can still come into building and do that for weather change. They have the ability to come into building because that food will be transferred inside the building. The average numbers per day are around The average numbers per day are around twelve hundred. Outside of the first day, the first day was around nine thousand. I'm sorry, twelve, did I just say? About twelve hundred compared to about nine hundred the first day. Any questions around the, the facility operation team?
I was wondering if you could tell me, how many, how many of our staff are actually working from home who are able to do that? And then how many are essential in-person services? I know you mentioned the security. But are there any other staff that we are asking to come? And if you give me a numbers breakdown, I would appreciate that.
I can get you the numbers. Some persons who had outstanding health issues, we did not ask them to come in if there was security. And obviously, this virus indicated, at least the medical professionals indicated that the target population was sixty or sixty-five and older. I can get you the exact number as well. But right now, the critical need people will be maintenance, custodian, security. We will be leveraging nurses' lives in the next two or three days as we give out these apparatuses. We would like to be asking nurses to come in and do a a scan of temperature as persons are walking in with the monitor, with the kind of infrared device. And so the nature of critical need will vary depending upon what our needs are. At this point in time, teachers are considered critical need, principals are considered critical need. It varies depending upon what the needs might be as this pandemic continues to unfold.
Thank you.
Institutional advancement?
Basically, real synopsis of institutional advancement. They have been working really hard, making sure that the updated website is taken care of. As you can imagine, information changes on a regular basis. They've also set up a donor button. Some persons are donating funds as necessary for Wi-Fi or for paying for meals. At this point in time, the federal government doesn't cover costs for different adults. The district is doing that. The RoboCall, so Let's Talk, they helped to develop the maps and flyers. They're also, quite frankly, working with all of our partners. We have a number and number of partners. I indicated one or two of them, Operation Food Search, gave us a thousand units of food to give out. We have Burger King looking to do the same thing. Taco Bell looking to do the same thing. A local chef wants to do the same thing. So they are interfacing. They're the interface for all of those partners who want to support us along with the foundation to make sure that they are they are making sure that they, that we can adequately support anybody who wants to support us because the worst thing to do is get something donated to us that we can't adequately support. And so they are working through all of those kinds of things. Obviously, they work to make sure that what we are doing today is taking place. They are working on all of the functions that would have taken place over the next two months, like educator of the year, athletic banquet. They're looking to see how to renegotiate contracts, how to look to reschedule these kind of events. They are focused on those kinds of things as well. But they've been incredibly instrumental in terms of the the communications that takes place throughout the district and external to the district such that people are getting the right and best information. As you can imagine, as I said before, things change on a regular basis so that they have to constantly update websites and constantly update what's going on with new information. So that's been their main function right now. They're also working on two grants that are due in the next week, next month, rather. They're working on some federal grants. One, a COPS grant, and one is another grant that they're working on around social emotional support. So the work that they're doing is still taking place while they deal with all of the kind of nuances that this pandemic requires us to do around communication.
You had mentioned Burger King and Taco Bell and a local chef. And I believe last week you had let us know that a community partner, maybe it was two weeks ago now, a community partner had stepped in to cover the cost of the adult meals, which were previously one dollar. Could you let us know who that was and how long they are committed to ensuring adults' access to food? Sorry to go back to that topic.
Yeah, I am not sure if they want to remain anonymous. Obviously, offline, I can provide that information to each board member. But I don't know that they have given us permission. As a matter of fact, I'm almost positive they have not given us permission to publicly say who they are. But I can tell you who that is offline. And my understanding is more than enough money that they donated that will cover adult meals at this point in time. Last week, there were like something like three hundred and thirty. But I think there's more than enough money if this continues for them to cover every adult meal.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So financial?
So Ms. Vow asked a question, I think a really, really good question, and I think this is one the board needs to lean in on. At this point in time, we've been told that the funding that we received this year will continue. Maybe with some adjustments, some small adjustments, but we don't know for sure. As you might imagine, people are not spending money. And so taxes and property taxes also may be implicated. And that's two of our largest funding sources. So property and sales tax revenue are at risk from March until the end of the year. We don't know what that looks like right now. The current year GOV spending, we froze also yesterday. So at this point in time, any principal who want to spend anything has to get permission for me to spend. Frankly and honestly, because kids are not in school, so it's not necessary for them to buy anything. So all spending has been frozen. We call it non-essential spending. We are likely to take a hit regarding, as I already said, summer school and Medicaid for the two thousand twenty-one school year because all of those things were part of what we were planning for next year, the tax levy for two thousand twenty. We hope that we will not have an issue with balance in the budget. We have some, the whole notion of school closure negotiations, I won't even talk about at this point in time. The leveraging of federal funds because preschool is funded as a result of kids being in school. And so I'm thinking that the attendance that we used for this year could be rolled over. From last year could be rolled over. There's some concerns, as I talked to Mrs. banks today around pension funding because, as you know, the pension is funded exclusively by the school district. And so if the revenue is reduced because of investments, because basically the money is invested in that money funds how pension paid. If the money doesn't come up to the amount it should be, the actuarial recalculates and the district would have to increase their costs to cover that. So these are all long-term things that might be implicated. Again, if financial challenges are real, only until they said that they're unknown. We just don't know what's going to happen. We have no idea of what's going to happen moving forward around revenue. We have made a commitment, and this board has made a commitment to continue to pay employees. At least through the twenty-second, I think we will have to sit down and have some conversation moving forward relative to that piece. But at this point in time, everybody's, this board is committed to paying through the twenty-second. We will likely have a better idea, but at this point in time, it's up in the air. It has been intimated from the governor that funding for next year might be compromised. In some ways, it should perform, but we don't know that right now. And I'm positive the governor doesn't know that either. So right now, we're paying substitutes and temporary staff. Those will be persons who are full-time equivalent on a six-month average. And our vendors at this point in time have made requests. And we're working with legal to determine who we might be obligated to and who we're not obligated to. And we will judiciously determine how we will address that. And I will inform the board as more information is coming forward. The stimulus bill has kicked in thirteen point one billion dollars. And those dollars are going to be leveraged to states. In the phone call tomorrow, I am positive the commissioner will talk a little bit about it. But it will come through the Title I source. In other words, districts will get money, but it will come through the same requirements that we have to use for Title I spending. We don't know what those are right now. The language is not really clear around some things that we're looking at. But I just want the board to be fully aware that there are likely going to be some financial implications of what this COV nineteen virus means to the district and to the state and obviously to the city. So I can't give you definitive answers right now, other than to say that there is a level of concern and we are monitoring daily in terms of what might be happening as information comes available and obviously provided to you. But this changes on a regular basis. And the link to which this goes will have some impact on all of those kinds of things.
Are there questions on the budget or financial implications? Hey, human resources?
I did have one question. I thought Donna was, I was waiting. Are there, do we know anything about, you know, the state expediting unemployment for such as private businesses? Do we have anything like that in place, any sort of emergency funding for paying staff passed beyond that April twenty-second?
So I'll let Mr. St. Alma jump in. I understand that the new law went into effect the day that we had to post on our website from the labor, the federal, and Mrs. St. Alma can talk better to this issue.
With the passage of the CARE Act, the, it does include some extension of benefits or unemployment benefits for a longer period. So the, whether or not that necessarily, I'm not necessarily aware of any specific funding forum from the state of Missouri to allow school districts or to fund school districts specifically continuing to employ people.
Thanks. Human resources?
Basically, just simply indicating that human resources is actively processing candidate candidates right now. The connecting with teacher applicants by Zoom, processing unemployment verifications, I think they're in twenty-five to thirty. They're still collaborating with our partners around a selection process for teachers who might have been on a pipe ride. And they've done less than five, five retirements and resignations. And the bottom line is we're still continuing what we were doing in the minutia of that over the last eight days, if you will, screening, everything that we're doing is online. The meeting with the local four-twenty weekly NDA, local forty-two, as questions arise, as you can imagine. Employees have some concerns around them working. Some unions are concerned about certain people working, certain people not working, being considered critical, and certain people not being considered critical. So the bottom line is they are continuing to do the work that they were doing before, looking at the mail-in. Some of the things are time-sensitive, working with the public on who to pay. As you can imagine, persons are not scanning in. And so the HR, along with payroll and finances are pre-doing that for persons, if you will, such that they can get paid and not miss any kind of time. So that's basically what's happening with human resource as it relates to this particular initiative around, related to this virus.
Network superintendents?
Basically, I'm just indicating the network superintendents are supporting principals and teachers. Again, I said, as I said before, phone calls take place every single day. As they get feedback from them and they provide their feedback to me around what needs to happen, questions they might have. Can people go in the building? Can people not go in the building? So they are, they are supporting them as much as they can virtually. And they're also visiting them if it's necessary to go in their school and visit them. Principals have been reporting to some buildings and assistant principals, depending upon what they need to get done, just to help teachers get in buildings to get materials. We limited, we limited them to about five or ten minutes to go in and get the materials that they need for the virtual learning they have to do. But basically, what they're doing is supporting principals. That's their main job and being the conduit between principals and myself and central office departments.
Okay, so the next document in our packet is the academics checklist. Is this something you wanted to review or is that just for our?
It's just for your information. I don't need to review anything, but this is what's being provided to the person, if you will, and what, again, if you look at our website, you can see the updated, that update that occurred today to make it a little bit easier for persons to be able to navigate. And the special education document is a work in progress. It's going out, I think, tomorrow. I think the legal needs to review it as well. But the intent here is to kind of talk about the fact that some of the IEP conferences that we will be doing will be done virtual, be done on conference call and all of the guidelines that you see in this document. You can notice that this document is on page twenty-two to thirty because of the real challenges around providing support for teachers and, and students, quite frankly, because of the law. Again, and Mr. St. Alma could kind of talk for this. He's on a phone call with districts across the country as it relates to special education services. Because the feds have not blinked, quite frankly, in terms of what's required for sped students, for special education students. They're still holding us to that level of responsibility. But this document kind of lays out a question and answer that kind of covers everything in case you had any questions or some people might ask questions.
Are there any questions on special ed? So how, so one, I hear that this is a draft. But then once, once the district has a plan moving forward with how to hold IEP meetings that are due during this time period, how are we reaching out to parents to let them know of their options and to communicate how that will proceed? Is it the case managers for individual students or something different?
So all of our, the district has set up such that they are case managers for particular schools. And they are actually calling parents and doing IEPs from March first until the time we were out, quite frankly, that window of time that we were out to April twenty-second. So they're only doing the IEPs within a window of time that they will do. If this is extended for any period of time, they will do IEPs for that window of time that was due as well. And they will give parents the ability to Zoom, give parents the ability to call on the phone, give parents the ability to do any way, any number of ways to try to include them in the process. If a parent indicates, from my understanding, that they don't want to do it at this point in time, they're rather weak, then they would document that, put that in writing, and then we will push it back to a time when we are back in a quote-unquote regular or normal situation. But a parent would be the driver in terms of how they want to interact around the IEPs.
Okay, and then, so if a parent does want to participate in the process now, the regular documentation will still go out. All the, like, the notices and things will still go out and the, based on the legal guidelines?
That is my understanding, yes.
Are there questions on special ed? Okay, questions?
I do have a question on special ed. So just knowing that you know, our special education students need a lot more hands-on support. And that's something that obviously we can't do with social distancing and being outside. And also just knowing that that virtual support is going to look different from our general education students. What are, has like the special ed team and not just like the district staff, but the actual persons that provide that hands-on support, have they been able to come together or get some PD or training on ways that they can continue to support their students, especially those who might just work with one particular student? Have they been able to get that support on how to transition to this virtual?
So what the federal government has indicated to us that whatever we provide for general ed students, we have to provide the same for special ed students and to the degree that the IEP drives what they need, we will be trying to provide that, Mr. Lang, teacher by teacher. In addition to that, we're working on a strategy to try to make sure that those special needs students have additional support. Can't talk a lot about it right now because we are in the process of a negotiation with a party that I can kind of talk a little bit about later on and send an email about. Don't want to put it on the screen here because that party has not had the ability to get an approval here. But I am suspecting that, that the students who are identified as special needs will get teacher support as well as additional support. And that support may be a phone call. That support may be determining where they are, what kind of additional support they may need. But it is, it is our full intent to provide the same equal services for special students that we're providing for general ed students with the intent of providing more support, if you will. That is what the intent is right now. Again, I don't want to get into too many of the details right now, but I can talk offline, kind of tell you what we're thinking about doing in that space.
That's fine. And then my second question had to deal with, I don't even know if we're in this section anymore. But the second question had to deal with the there was something in our packet about like after-school programs and. But the second question had to deal with the, there was something in our packet about like after-school programs and whatnot. And obviously, those are no longer. But thinking about like the MOUs and the contracts for services that we have, I know one of the things, and this might be us just going through those MOUs, but one that just got approved was for, you know, mental health and counseling services. Are we still allowing our vendors to honor those contracts? And are there ways that we are requiring or encouraging those vendors to, if they provided a service to students in the district, to be able to do that virtually? So virtual mental health counseling or therapy or virtual tutoring, if that's something they did after school, or virtual mentoring? I know periodically they have the male mentor program as well. Are they still encouraged to? Are we reaching out to those vendors to allow them to do that virtually?
So the first two weeks that we were out, we were doing enrichment, so we did not engage our vendors because we were still trying to determine what was going to be happening. It is my understanding that on a case-by-case basis, depending upon the MOU or contract, we are looking to leverage those vendors who have the ability to provide support to families that we can monitor electronically, similar to what we would do with our own teachers and staff. So on a case-by-case basis, and Mr. Sanalma might want to talk just a little bit about that, but on a case-by-case basis, we will be looking to see telehealth, teletherapy, all of those kinds of things. I have encountered a couple myself, quite frankly. And so we are determining, Mr. Brown is on the student support side, to determine if the entity has the wherewithal to still provide the same level of support that they did before. So, Mr. Sanalma, because I know you've been involved in one or two of these.
To, I'll only just add to what Dr. Adams said. It is on a case-by-case basis and with the district continuing some services that I know are being offered through the city, through an MOU with the city. I know that the district's social workers are beginning to and continuing those services, mental health services to students who were already being provided those services via the social workers. But Dr. Adams indicated the real key issue is for, as is in the same issue with our virtual programs, is the district does have to have an ability to monitor or record those interactions for the protection of.
Thank you.
So what overarching questions do you all have, kind of pulling all of the pieces of this together, or do you have questions?
Dorothy, I have a quick question. Dr. Adams has alluded to April the 24th. Is that in alignment with what the mayor has indicated through April 30th? So is there some kind of collaboration?
So the last, I'm sorry, Dr. Roberts, I'm cutting you off. It is my understanding that the last order to stay in state, to stay in play was April the 22nd. I have not received anything past April 22nd. It is my understanding that the president on yesterday indicated April 30th, but that has not been, that has not been picked up by this mayor or this governor, to my knowledge, as of this time. My understanding, the last was April the 22nd.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could you share a little about how the district is ensuring equitable access just across like technology distribution and also access to educational opportunities? So I very much appreciate that teachers have the opportunity to adapt kind of the materials that are being put out by the academic office. I think that's excellent. But with that, there does come this piece of how do we make sure that every student has access to the things that they need? And so what supports are in place to make sure that there, I guess, that the district is following up on what teachers are doing and what's being offered, just to ensure that there's baseline access to the educational opportunities that we provide?
So, President, you raise one of the most frustrating questions that we have dealt with over the last six or seven days to try to make sure that we are trying to be as equitable as possible. And it is a really, 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 really hard place to be. We realize and understand that some families have access to technology and other families do not have access to technology. And so we have been trying to be as diligent as possible, trying to make sure that the Wi-Fi access that we provide. And that's why we're looking to purchase 10,000 hotspots over the next week or two weeks, such that families could have that access. And I've been insisting that, that I don't want to do this unless we can get enough to give everybody an opportunity. That being said, it is very difficult to find some of our families to know where they are, to track them down and even get them the software and help what they may need. So this has been a difficult one for us to try to make sure that we are trying to be as equitable as possible. And I will be totally candid and honest with you. I just don't know how equitable we are being because I don't know how equitable this city is set up to create opportunities for kids that are marginalized. And so it is incredibly frustrating. This has raised that issue to a higher degree than it's ever been before. And I'm just being totally candid and honest with you. And so we're doing everything in our power to try to do that, even in terms of having people go to people's homes as we do with the ESOL families, to drop off food in their homes or to drop off 60 boxes of food at the home of our apartments over the last two or three days. So we are working to try to make it happen, but I don't have a, I don't have a silver spoon on this one, President. I can tell you what we're trying to do. I could tell you what level of success we're having and not having. But I can honestly candidly tell you, we are not providing equitable services to every single family in this city right now based upon what's going on, no if and buts about.
I appreciate your honesty and candor in answering that. And I think, you know, what we're seeing with this pandemic is that it's really exposing all of the inequity built into just our societal infrastructure. So in what ways is the city supporting the school district? And in what ways, like, has the mayor's office been able to work with the district to be able to look for opportunities to provide for our students so that it isn't the school district acting in isolation? I mean, what I've heard on this call and the call you had previously with Deaconess, you know, the school district is really doing the lift on food. We are working with our own partners to make sure children have access to clothes and all of the other things that they need just to be human and to survive and to get through such an epic crisis. And I'm curious, what are the ways that others or other elected officials are stepping up to help this school district in this time?
So I think a notion of equity exists, not just for what we're trying to do, but also what the city is trying to do as well. So we have been in lockstep and communication with the city's representative, whether it's Dr. Echoes or Mr. Pickney and the mayor's office on a regular basis around everything that we can do. They have helped to try to galvanize and organize such that we are trying to fill the gaps, not just us, but charter schools and private working schools as well. So we're trying to fill all of the gaps. But I think just to your point, this pandemic has exposed a lot of cracks that are part of, unfortunately, the history of St. Louis. And I don't need to be, I don't want to be philosophical around it in any particular way. But the bottom line is it makes it much, much harder to provide the support for the families that were already struggling before and can't, don't have transportation or pick up a Wi-Fi or a computer. And then with the pandemic occurring, we can't necessarily go knock on their door and give it to them because of the social distancing piece. So it's just really made it hard, but the work that we have historically done well, which means to go door by door, knock on doors, find families, track them down, it's made it much more harder for us to do that because there's a barrier and the barrier is called COV-19. So it is incredibly frustrating. I would think by the time we get to the 14th of April, I can give you a much more granular answer with details and data behind it in terms of who we've been able to impact. Have those been families on the North Side? Have those been families of color? Have those been families, yada, 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 special needs? I can look at those categories and say, yes, we've gotten this. Right now, remember, everything is enrichment. Everything is enrichment. So we're not actually grading anything. We're saying this is an enrichment activity for you to do over the next two weeks and your academic experience is a result of doing this. Next week, I will know for a fact how many kids have completed assignment? How many kids have been contacted by teachers? How many kids have Wi-Fis? How many kids have computers? I will have data for you by the 14th that's much more granular, that will really show if we are being equitable and if we're not being equitable.
So I have heard you said that you don't want to do this unless we do it for everyone. And there's also some concern about being ready to go on the 6th. Has your team given any consideration to voting by a couple of dates or a week to make sure that we have all the pieces in place?
Right now, we have 3,000, let's say, persons who have filled out the survey. We're going to address those families because they've done the survey, they've given us information. But we don't want to stop, and some may be in that category, but not equitable group. We intend to try to move forward starting Thursday. But the bottom line, President, we have to tweak our process. We're to tweak our process on a number of families as opposed to having 10,000 show. But we have to tweak our process in order to secure how we're going to do this. And so I have no problem with starting Thursday for that reason, as well as the reason of some families filled out the survey as late as last Wednesday and they're knocking on our door and saying, hey, I need your computer. Hey, I need your Wi-Fi. And so we're going to, we realize that this is a three-week process. We can't all get it done in one day. So there would have always been the opportunity for some families to get something earlier than other families, irrespective of the equity issue, just because of how this is going to have to be rolled out. So we are trying to be diligent and strategic around it. And to answer your question, the team and I felt that we need to move forward, even in a small way, starting Thursday and Friday. Remember, the work is not going to be started for them until April the 6th. But we start on April the 2nd. It gives us four days. We are looking at working Saturday and Sunday as well to try to get equipment to kids and families, not just during the Monday to Friday time period, but the Saturday and Sunday time period by setting up a window to try to get the technology and stuff to families as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other kind of big picture questions?
Yeah, I was wondering if we have any idea at this time. I know a lot of other districts across the country are talking about just dismissing school for the year and regrouping later. Is that something that we have had, we have a contingency plan for in case that is ordered? Is that something we've thought that far ahead on or are we just hoping it doesn't happen?
So the health director, Dr. Echoes, is the one who gave the order to go to the 22nd. The mayor gave the order to shelter in place along with coming out of their office. We are in close conversation with the county as well. The decisions that we have made, have been made in the past, have been uniformed decisions, meaning us, the county, charters, and they've been directed, quite frankly, from the governmental body, in this case, the mayor's office and the Dr. Echoes, the health director. I would suspect, Mrs. Vow, that we'll have some more conversation with them over the next two weeks. We have not hit April 1st yet. We will tomorrow, the next four, three and a half to four hours. And then we have 21 days to see how this goes. We have had discussions about what happens if the year ends, if the year is extended or if it's extended to the end of the year. And we are working on contingencies around that as it relates to graduation, proms, all of the kinds of things that you could imagine, credits for kids. So we are planning with the worst-case scenario with the belief that something will change. But I would suspect that I will engage the board sometime in mid-April for this conversation or discussion once I get some intel from the city and the health department and possibly the governor's office. I understand today that the governor is indicating that statewide, he's looking to extend the school closings from April 6th for the all 555 districts to another date. I don't know what that date is right now, but the governor may be extending the date past the 6th for the entire state to some other date that might have some influence, some impact on what we decide.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Dr. Adams, have we gone to review our cybersecurity plan at this time since we're moving remotely to mostly everything? I know that was something that we talked about when we went to Harvard and, you know, just to make sure that our teacher and student information is protected at this time. What are we doing?
So we, the board approved, well, it was already approved, the board approved, was made aware, I think you want to say two board meetings. So we have an entity that in the process of evaluating our internet and all of those kinds of things. So I would suspect that it have a report for the board in the next, in the next, next board meeting, possibly. I could give you an update, but we are in the process of evaluating all those. So I don't have a report to give you now, but I'll do an update on that report on the 14th.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Adams.
Dr. Adams, just several questions. You indicated that the district was doing surveys on technology. Is that on the website?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay, and how long will it remain active?
Until we try, my goal is to try to get every single kid. So it will stay active until we try to get every single kid. I mean, we're going to keep it out there.
Okay.
It will be the driver for who we give computers to, who we give the Wi-Fi to. So it will stay out there until we try to get all 20,000 kids or 20,000 or 19,000. We have, right now, Mrs. Van Ooyen just emailed me to tell me that we have 5,100, and right now, 5,100 have been completed in just five, five or six days. So I suspect as families understand that this will be the driver around technology, we should, over the next two weeks, hopefully, get as many as possible. Right now, it's at 5,100.
Okay, now how are we communicating to our families, the telehealth piece that Adam mentioned? How can they access that or how are we helping them to understand that it's available?
Right now, we have a 1-800 number, a number that they're calling the Student Support Service. And the Student Support Service is providing information. Plus, on our website, there's a link that goes to the kind of services and support they can get. As part of, if we go to our website, you click on certain things, it'll tell you exactly who you need to call and what kind of services could be provided. What Mr. Lane, I think, is talking about is those contractors that we are not engaged with right now, who have the ability to do so. And right now, we are not engaged with anybody right now in that space that I know of. We will be evaluating them over the next two or three days as they come to us, quite frankly, to be honest with you. They have come to us more than we've come to them and say, hey, I have a contract with you. I have an agreement with you. Can we continue to provide that service? We're looking at their contract. We're looking at their ability to support security and confidentiality in a way that we want them to do so, and then we'll allow them to provide that service. But we've kind of verified and made sure that they can.
Okay, I understand the MOU piece and that's the social distancing. But you've answered the question. I appreciate that. So again, parents can go to the website if they're interested in talking to a social worker and or counselor. That's prominent up in the very front of the homepage.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
So I just, I'm a little concerned about the driving force of giving kids devices coming through a survey that they fill out online. So I'm a little worried that the first, like, wave of people that are responding to this survey are the people who either have access already to internet and a device or one or the other. And so in the event there were either not enough to go around or students who are having like a delayed access to these items, we're likely going to see that the students who need the device and the hotspot the most are the ones that'll be receiving it towards the end if this is the primary way that we are determining how to distribute them.
It is a relevant question that we discussed at length over the last three days. And I don't know that there is a way to do it, President. Principals are calling. Principals know their faculty and the student population really well. And so to be honest with you, we think that the persons who fill out the survey have been quite candid. Teachers are calling. They know who had technology and who didn't have technology. I'll give you an example. Teachers are calling, they know who had technology and who didn't have technology. I'll give you an example. You know, the truth of the matter is, those schools that you might think might be taking advantage of it, at this point in time, our indication is that it's not taking place. We look at the data, and based on the data that we're looking at for schools that you might think fill it out first, they're the ones that say, hey, I have technology already. That's why the percentage right now is about 17% to 20% who say they need it. That's, if you look at that number, that's about 4,000 kids who say they need Wi-Fi. And well, computers are only about, let's say, 8,000. We have more than enough to accommodate that group at this point in time.
Okay, and I'm glad to hear that individual schools are reaching out.
Yes.
I was thinking more about just having that link on the website and thinking about the robocall directing people to it, that the when actual families are responding, they may or may not be the the families that are most in need, that were reached directly.
What came up as well is that we're asking persons to go to the website to do this. And we are setting up the ability for persons to do it on their phone as well, because the internet connection is one thing. But persons have, a lot of persons have phones, and we're trying to give them the ability to text it. So we're trying multiple ways to do it, to be honest with you. Right now, what we're tasking is teachers to call families and assist them in terms of making a connection to fill out the information. And a lot of the teachers know the families that have the greatest challenges, and so they are advocating to go to them first to try to get that information uploaded so that those families can get what they need. But I will agree with you, it is a dilemma, it is a dilemma.
Hello, Dr. Adams?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. It's in regards to communication. We currently have a TV station, but it, I know that it's on low frequency. And many of our students don't have the access to that channel, to the station. But I'm wondering if it's possible that the city could make some kind of accommodations and increase, help the school district increase the power, so that we might utilize that TV station more so. And then the second question is, on Facebook, is it possible to have teachers put some of their classes online on the Facebook, so that people can tune in sometime and see what's going on?
So we're using Zoom, and so we do have the ability for teachers to do lessons and then put them on Zoom where they can, they can actually see what a teacher is doing. Facebook, I need to check, I put a question mark there, and I put a question mark to TV stations. We have been able to penetrate PBS, and PBS is working with us to do lessons online, which is TV, which means everybody has, almost everybody has access to TV. And they're also working with us, and we're still in the negotiation phase, for teachers to do lessons from PBIS as well. So Ms. Willis has sent me a text and said they are working with Facebook and also SSL, SLPSTV to try to do exactly what you're saying. I'll give you an update of that probably by the end of the week and say where we are and around PBIS as well.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Adams?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way to use the facility at Roosevelt to assist in that push out of online activities for kids?
I will check. Yeah, I will.
Resource there.
I will check with my team to see. I had not thought about that, but them as well as Conahan both have the ability to do this. I will check and see.
I just had a follow-up question on the technology access and the equity piece. Did we have any metrics or data on who had technology access and where there was a digital divide before? Maybe a way of identifying some of the families who didn't have that before this emergency hit?
No, we did not. We had, we had, we had surveyed in the past around emails and also around, I want to say emails, also around the phone numbers, but no, we, I'm sorry, emails is what we surveyed before, but we have not done any survey before around that. The parent portal is what we've done before, parent portal, we surveyed around parent portal, but we had not surveyed around technology, no matter.
Do you think that now that we have this survey in place, it might be something that we could use long-term to help bridge the digital divide? I mean, since it's a tool that's already been developed, maybe we could just tweak it a little bit for good year?
100%, yes. I think one of the challenges, or one of the things that the board is going to have to, not have to, one of the, one of the things I'll be asking the board to consider as we get into this next year is, what's our responsibility for providing internet access with this being such a critical issue? So in other states and other districts, they've leveraged the business community to kind of assist in this place, whether that's charter or somebody else to do something around the entire city, such that families would have it. At this point in time, now that we have the data, we can make a, we could drive, hopefully drive this conversation in a different kind of way.
I think it would be really good if we can be proactive about that, just being, it's almost a positive that we're cognizant of that, and we now have the tools in place, especially if we're getting the technology, if we are able to spend some portion of allocating our budget to that technology, perhaps maybe replacing it every two or three years or something to ensure continued access, just as a note to ourselves, I guess, for the future. And thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Adams? Or any discussion that you want to have? If not, is there a motion?
Do we have, again, knowing that this is a new and developing situation, I guess stemming off of the questions that have already been asked, looking future for, future-facing, do you have, like, a team or a group of people that are specifically dedicated to being like on the front lines of the response to this and seeing like, and starting to think about like what this does look like going forward? I don't know if that's, you know, department heads or whatever, but an intentional team that's that's looking at where we now? And also, how does this have an effect on what we can potentially do in the future?
Yeah, right now, it's the departments, as you already indicated, because mainly what we were doing, Mr. Lane, was just trying to be responsive to the changing environment, as it changes every single day. But it has raised the question around e-learning and our ability to be much more responsive in this space. So I would suspect that next year, we will be much more aggressive around identifying a source, whether it be a person or a department or an entity outside of us to support us in this space, because it is, I think, going to be much more, a much more leveraged resource from all educational entities in the in the country, whether that's colleges and colleges and K-12 institutions. So we have thought, in the midst of everything going on, what we need to do to position ourselves in the future if this ever happens again.
Dr. Adams, I just received a note from a parent. They may have missed the section that you spoke about on technology in the survey, and I'd like to just kind of share with you, they're watching. And the question is, if parents don't have technology, how are they supposed to access the webpage to complete the survey or find out any of the resources?
So.
You may have spoken to that? Very briefly, could you?
Yeah, if we get a number, we can call them and then walk them, not walk them, do the survey for them. So we're actively doing it for them. So again, I have a problem with you giving out my number, 541-265, and they can call me and I can put them in touch with the right person, and we could take that information and get them what they need.
Thank you.
Any remaining questions? Or a motion to adjourn?
I just had one quick comment, and that was to the district staff for getting all of this together. I know we had gone through some testing and just kind of working through those bumps. Thank you to our tech team and also for creating an event on Facebook to get that out with families. I think that that has, in the past, been very helpful when the board was managing our own social media. So if we could get some data around how many people we were able to reach through Facebook, that would be really helpful. But I think that everyone has done a really good job so far, so thank you. I know that we're all improvising here, but thanks again.
I'd like to add to what Natalie just said. I do want to thank your all hands-on-deck approach to tonight's board meeting. There was a lot of information collected and shared, and I certainly appreciate everyone's hard work.
I will go ahead and move the adjourn.
Is there a second?
Again.
Ms. Lewis?
Ms. Dee Jones?
Yes.
Ms. S. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Vow?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey Collins?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.